All right, we are.
You're muted.
Good evening, everyone. This is Isle Palms Special City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 10th, 2020 at approximately 6:00 PM. This is a virtual meeting due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I'd like to call this meeting to order and acknowledge that both the press and the public were duly notified of this meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Tonight, we're going to do something new. We're going to have our public comments, and we're actually going to have everybody be able to speak in front of everybody online so everybody can see each other. We have 30 minutes, and I'm going to read some rules for everybody, and I hope everybody listens. Speakers must turn on the video and make sure that their actual name shows up as their Zoom identifier and mute themselves after their comments. Comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Speakers must focus and limit the comments to the topic under discussion. Speakers must address comments to council as a whole and not to any individual council member. Citizens' comments period is not meant to be a question and answer session between speaker and council or staff. Speakers must maintain decorum, civility, and refrain from making threats or personal attacks to council, staff, or the community. But before we get started, Nicole, could we have roll call?
Absolutely. Streepman?
President.
Councilmember Pounds?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Here.
Mayor Carroll?
Here.
Do you have a quorum? Oh, did I forget? Sorry. Councilmember Popson?
Here.
Thank you. Oh, you have a quorum?
Okay, thank you very much. We have 17 speakers who have signed up to speak tonight, and we're going to go down the list as the way we received them. Once we reach 30 minutes, it will be over. If you exceed 30 minutes, again, it will stop. So Nicole, if you would just kind of give us a who's on first and who's up second?
Absolutely. Speaking first is Stephen Slotchever, 273 Forest Trail. Coming up next is Linda Marie Hamilton, 117 Sparrow Drive.
Steve? There he is. Steve, can you hear me? Mute. Steve?
He's on mute.
How about now?
There we go.
All right, sorry about that.
Welcome.
I apologize for the delay. How y'all doing?
We're doing fine, thank you very much.
All right.
Comments, please.
Yes, sir. Well, as I think y'all realize, my name is Steve Slotchever, and I live at 273 Forest Trail. My parents had moved, they had a summer house out here since the time I was 10, and they moved out here full-time when I was 15. Candidly, as much of us know, I cannot imagine a greater place to grow up than this island. After high school, I moved away for college and law school and eventually worked my way back down to Charleston. And I lived downtown for about 20 years and eventually was able to get back on the island. I always knew I wanted to get here. It just took me a little bit longer than I thought it was going to take. My wife and I moved out here six and a half years ago to Forest Trail, which was just three weeks before our daughter Sophie Caden was born. And I wanted her to have the experience that I had on this island. Now, we're not here to talk about my growing up on the island or anything like that, but it's about the restaurant. And in terms of the Morgan Creek Restaurant, where this used to be the Morgan Creek Restaurant, we have spent countless nights down there. It doesn't get any better than being able to have dinner and our drinks while listening to music and taking in those sunsets. We also had some good times at Oyster Roast there as well. When our family and friends would come to town, which was often before the pandemic, we'd always bring them down there and enjoy that spot. It was a great social gathering place. Now, over the years on Ireland, I've had the opportunity and the chance to get to know John Bushnell and Dave and Chrissy Lorenz. And I'm confident that they're going to turn this spot into a place where we, as locals, will enjoy and be proud of. And that's what I wanted to say tonight. That was it.
Thank you very much. Nicole?
Speaking next is Linda Marie Hamel, 117 Sparrow Drive. Coming up after Ms. Hamel is Dan Slotchever, 6805 Back Bay Drive.
Can I go ahead?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you all so much for approving the lease that is the location for the Old Morgan Creek Grill. We just miss that so much. Such a void. You know, at least once a week, we would go and take the family and enjoy that area. It really has been missed since, you know, since Morgan Creek left. So we just look forward to having that space to go enjoy and be by the water and, you know, enjoy what Isle Palms is all about. So thank you so much. We really look forward to having a place there.
Thank you very much. Nicole?
Next speaking is Dan Slotchever, 6805 Back Bay Drive, followed by Katie Meers, 269 Forest Trail.
Dan, you might be muted.
Can you hear me now? Mr. Mayor, members of council, first, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today and for holding this meeting, which I think is very important and an important part of our community as we move forward. For those of you who don't know me, I've lived on the Isle of Palms since the 1980s when I was in high school. I moved away and I came back to the islands in 1996, and I've been a full-time resident since then with my wife and with my child, who is a senior in high school. So she's grown up on the island and grown up to a large extent in the Morgans Creek area. By way of background, I used to go to Trade Winds. For those of you who don't know, that's the old Morgans Creek. And then I started to go to Morgans Creek, and I was very excited when I watched the RFPs come forward. And I got to see the presentation, not only by this group, but by all the groups, and to see the changes that people are making to become modern. And I think this particular proposal is the best of the group, and I think that's what the public indicated also. I was present at the meetings. I had discussions with the public. And I was delighted when, at the end of that, you, as council, chose to give them an opportunity to put together the final details to move forward. It's unfortunate that COVID got in the way, and I know while they've been working on the details. My concern was that they, like everybody else, would walk away from this project. And I was delighted that, instead of walking away, they embraced it and decided to dig further and to try to find a way to make it work. The plan that they've got set forth looks wonderful. It's a nice change. It'll be something that I think all of us should be proud of. It's a place that we, as family members, my family, my friends, go to almost weekly, if not more, during the summertime. And it's something that I think we should be very happy about, the fact that we have people that have committed to the project they set forward with, and they've been willing to invest their own money, because these are strange times. And with COVID, although we may have a cure, we don't know. The restaurant business is a hard thing to be in, and they're putting forth their own money to help fix it up and to go forward. I would, I want to add that I know them, or I've gotten to know them over the last many months, and I can't really envision somebody better to take it on. People that live on the island, that are committed to the island, that live in the community, and that want to create an environment that's friendly for all. So I would encourage each of you to vote today to give them the lease, to let them move forward, and hopefully we'll be able to have a place that we can get into. And as a community, we can enjoy again when the summer comes, the spring comes, and hopefully the COVID environment goes away. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaking is Katie Myers, 269 Forest Trail. Up next will be Bill Barber, 2931st Avenue.
You're muted. Still muted, Katie?
It's a volume issue.
It appears to be. She is not muted on Zoom. It's got to be an input issue somewhere.
Mayor, maybe can we move on to Bill Barber and then come back to Katie?
Let's try that.
Let's see if she can get pulled together. Now she's muted.
Let's move. Katie, can we come back to you and let you work on? Okay, thank you. Bill Barber?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff. Bill Barber here. Wanted to speak concerning the Morgan Creek Grill lease, which seems to be the popular topic. Some points to get through in three minutes in no particular order for you guys, and thanks for having me. First, this was a failed RFP. Why do I say that? All the respondents seem to be aware of the RFP before it happened, so you yielded a net zero response rate. Last week, we heard the current responder say that he was aware of it before the advertisement. I feel pretty confident the previous tenant was. And I think I could say the same thing pretty confidently about the neighboring tenant and the marina operator. This brought you a zero response rate. Some reasons is I don't think we advertised you could demolish a building and rebuild it. I don't think we advertised a below-market rent for capital. Just some inputs there. Next point is the guaranteed rent is below market value. There are several measures of this. I think there's comps that are being questioned and things like that. But last week, I heard a lot of, you know, Morgan Creek Grill had done 4.3 million in sales, and I heard, well, it could be significantly more. Well, it may take time to do that. It was a lot of maybes. It could be this sort of thing. Just language that, you know, in my experience, sets off kind of alarms in my head. We need a minimum guaranteed rent. For instance, $25,000 is guaranteed to the city outside of break points, regardless of what happens. Next thing, and this kind of set some alarms off too, was benefits being mentioned that aren't in writing. Specifically, $2 million in structural improvements. If that's going to happen, it needs to be in writing, and we need to say what structural improvements are. So, for instance, an example here, that the proposed tenant puts up $2 million at an escrow account at the end of a year. Any non-approved, you know, structural improvements that aren't any, sorry, any structural improvements that aren't done, if there's a balance left, so they only spend a million dollars, they have to pay a city a million to the city in cash. Second benefit that's been mentioned, not in the lease, is low food prices. Number of ways to get that in the lease. If we got a benefit, it needs to be in writing. Bottom line, benefits are in writing. And going from the food crisis is my last point. We're really competing with area businesses here, and I've gotten personal feedback on that. And I think you guys have too, from other rare area restaurant owners that, you know, they feel they've been treated unfairly, and they're competing with a government agency. We've seen this in service and other things. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Ms. Myers, we're going to return back to you.
Yes, I believe I'm here now. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Hey, so I'm Katie Myers. I live at 269 Forest Trail. My husband and my three kids and I moved in in 2016, and at the time, we frequented the Old Morgan Creek Restaurant. We always had a good time there. We always wished that it was a little bit more modern and better food, but we had a good time. And we have been looking forward to a new restaurant coming in there ever since we realized that Morgan, the old restaurant, was going away. I was at the original town council meeting, I believe, when the three proposals were put forward. I think, to speak to the previous speaker, the proposals were across the board. I mean, I think one of them was to tear down the whole entire marina area and start from scratch. So the idea that a new restaurant was not on the table, I don't think that was ever, ever an issue. But anyway, so I've been excited about the proposal that was put forward by the Lorenzes and Bushnells. And we are, me and my family and all of our friends are super excited about having a new family-friendly, local-friendly restaurant that is walking distance from my house, and we can't wait for it to happen. We are really, really hopeful that it will happen by the spring. I think that with everything being shut down for as long as it has been, and with COVID and everything, I'm hopeful that in the spring, you know, life will be pretty much back to normal, God willing. And I think that would be the perfect time for this restaurant to be open. I think that if we delay anymore, and there isn't a restaurant there in the spring, that will make a lot of island residents and the people that come here for the spring and summer, I think we'd really be missing out. To speak to the issue of, I think that the previous speaker was saying about unfair competition or something like that. I mean, it is so packed and crowded at every restaurant in this island. I don't think that having another restaurant could possibly be a bad thing. You know, the more, the more great opportunities for the rest, for the island residents, the merrier. So I'm excited. I hope that you guys will vote in favor of this new restaurant. Thank you.
Speaking next is Mike Zimoff, 2 Tabby Lane. Speaking after Mr. Zimoff is Gary Nessler of 1722nd Avenue.
Hello, everyone. Do you have me?
Yes, sir, Mike.
All right. First off, I'd like to say thank you to everyone on this call. You guys have done a great job, given the circumstances, and I really appreciate your service. I think this is, you've been hit from all angles here, from, from all across the board, and I know it's been difficult, and I just want to go on record saying thank you. Beyond that, I'm calling, I'd like to talk to you and discuss the marina. I'm in favor of the lease that's proposed and everything that's, that has been discussed. I understand it's been a due diligence that's gone on, and quite frankly, that, that building is not doing well. And, and the sooner we get somebody in there to, to start piecing it together, the better. The restaurant business, I'm not in the restaurant business. I don't ever care to be in the restaurant business, but I, from what I know, that it's, it's, it's a brutal business, and you're fighting for nickels. And, and so I think any way that, that we can, that we can go through and get this, get that property up to snuff so that it is habitable, so it is, so that you, a business like that can start turning a profit would be, would be in the best interest of the city and best interest of the island residents. There's, there's the issue with, with all the parking. Obviously, the, there's a, a business has to have parking in order to, to, for, for not only its visitors, but for its, its staff. So I think all these things kind of come into play. I, I wholeheartedly believe that you guys did your due diligence when, when you selected this organization to, to, to move forward with, and I think it was a great decision. Dave Lorenz and, and his entity has a ton of experience. They are business people. They're not necessarily the, and they know how to run a business. And, and I think that's really, really important, because you can have a great restaurant that serves really great food, but if they don't know how to run a business, then, then that creates a whole host of other issues down the road. So I think it's, it's important for us to kind of foresee what, what could happen if this were to fall through and some other entities were, were to come, come forward.
Speaking next is Gary Nessler, 1722nd Avenue, followed by Julie Nessler of the same address.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Chief Cornet, a special thank you to you and your department for protecting us, as always, especially during these times. Desiree as well, thank you for your leadership. Let me start by saying that out of the three proposals that were presented, the Lorenz family, and knowing them for as long as we do, being somewhat biased, they know how to run the business. It by far was the best, most equitable, and community-friendly restaurant that needs to be on the island. As the previous speakers have said, this is about a community, and especially during COVID, I think it behoves us all now to come together as a community and not create any, any further divide, especially given that, at the moment, the marina does not truly represent what our island stands for. As you can see, the restaurant has been uninhabited for a while, and having people like the Lorenzes actually put up their own money and make it a family environment that's truly social and very much welcoming, not only to the island residents, but the guests that are going to be coming into the marina, you know, and those visitors who are now going to be coming in to the new property in Wild Dunes, I think is going to be very welcomed. That's number one, two, and probably three. I think, to one of the previous speakers, to his point, we have to be transparent and continue to be transparent. And I think that, that speaks loudly to the Lorenzes as well, and to the character of those individuals as business owners. They will be 100% transparent. They will share with us the ups and downs, again, as community members, as residents on the island. They're committed. And, and most importantly, they're going to open up their arms like they have, you know, to many of us throughout the years with their other restaurant entities. And as Mr. Slotchever, one of the Slotchevers said earlier on, that, you know, this is a place that we need to visit with our families, our children. Our children have grown up. Our children, more than likely, some of them will be hired, hopefully, by, by the restaurant. And, you know, similar to how most of the children have passed through other entities at the marinas such as Title Wave and others. So I want to make sure that, you know, we extend our appreciation to the city council. We recognize the challenges before you. I'm not going to comment on, you know, allegations of RFPs, et cetera. We are where we are. It's time to stop wasting valuable time. Embrace the community. Embrace leaders of the community, residents of the community that will give back to the community, and that's really what this is all about. Is creating an environment that is community-based, family-based, and friendly, and offering at a price point, and a quality that I think, you know, the Lorenzes are known for. So with that, council members, I want to thank you for voting positively on this, moving this forward, and having a place that we can call, you know, our, our social and family environment in the coming season. So thank you, and I'll pass it over to my better half.
Speaking next is Julie Nessler, 1722nd Avenue, followed by Michael Calder, 5 Shad Row.
Hello?
Hey, Julie.
We lost you.
We can hear you.
Hello?
Yes.
You're good.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, thank you for having me on tonight. I just wanted to, next. Okay. I, I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty. I just wanted to, thank you for having me on tonight, and, and I just, I just wanted to I wanted to express my concern, or not my concern, but my support for the restaurant group. I've known Dave and Chrissy for quite some time, and I don't think that there is anyone better to move forward with this marina restaurant project. They, there is so much integrity in what they do, and I really do feel that, I really do feel that they take pride in their personal investment. I think it's perfect for the island, but the personal investment that they take in the product that they produce and the atmos, atmosphere that they provide, I think, is what we really need on the island to come together. I, I'm sorry, I'm having so much difficulty right now with this. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
We can speak next, Mr. Michael Calder of 5 Shad Row, followed by Sam Williams of 1144th Avenue.
Hello, can you hear me?
I'm sorry. I don't know if you can hear me or not, but to everyone's point, who has spoken in favor of the restaurant, I just don't.
Go ahead, Mr. Calder.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You can go ahead.
Hopefully, I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, and rest of the city council for allowing us to come on and speak. Personally, I've, I've been very fortunate to live on the island here for about 10 years. When my wife and I moved back from Florida, we, she, she talked very highly of this island. She grew up here. Her family dating back to the late 30s, when her grandparents have a, bought a house here or built a house. And when her family moved here in the 80s of growing up here, and didn't take a lot of arm twisting to get me back, but we moved back on to the, her family home here at Shad Row 10 years ago, and with our two young daughters, five and three, and we have a lot of fond memories at Morgan Creek. It was a great place to bring your kids to. It was a great place to bring friends and family who would come into town and stay with us. The location, I don't think I need to tell anybody or sell anybody on it. It's one of the most beautiful settings on Isle of Palms. And we were very excited. When I first moved here, I got to meet Dave and Chrissy through Sullivan's Island Elementary. They were doing, we were hosting something for the class, and our kids were in class together, and Dave asked, or they asked if, if we could be a part of, of, I think it was the end of the year party. And Dave and I, I think we cooked about 100 hamburgers, and I got to know him from there, and from there, our friendship grew. And when I found out about the opportunity of them throwing their name in the hat here at Morgan Creek, the, the restaurant here, I couldn't have been more excited. They are two great people. They are great for this community. They, they give back to, to a lot of charities, and they are people who, who I feel like would be an asset to this community. They are, as well as John Bushnell and Bridget, I've gotten to really get to know them as well over the years. And to have local people be a part of this, I just do not think the city council and members of Mr. Mayor that y'all could go wrong with this, with them. I was very excited when they, when they did their presentation, and I'm even more excited now of them getting to this. So I would say that y'all So I would say that y'all are, uh, y'all have a good, uh, good choice of people that, that would, that you have selected to do this. And, uh, uh, being around with them in the local restaurants here, I think a lot of the local restaurant owners, uh, will, will be, um, to that would, will be, let you know their character as well. They're very, I feel like, re- very well respected to the local restaurateurs here. So I thank you for your time and, uh, and again, I, I, I'm 100% behind this and I think, uh, um, Dave and Chrissy and, and John and Bridget and any of my, all, all that are involved, you will not go wrong with them.
Very much.
Thank you. Next up would be Sam Williams, if he's on deck, 1144th Avenue, followed by Chevlin Howe, 278 Forest Trail. Mr. Williams, if you want to take yourself off of mute, you're free to speak as soon as you're ready.
Sam, you're on mute.
Thanks to have the opportunity to speak. Honorable Mayor Jim McCarr. Uh, I've lived on the island for 20 years and, uh, I'm the unofficial mayor of 42nd Avenue. So I've been living in all my friends, the Morgans Creek. And I'm within a distance of riding my golf cart down and hanging out and it's so, just a great place to bring everybody together, all the families. And, uh, we look, look forward to it. I don't think it'd be anybody better than John and Dave to get this moving, run the restaurant, cause they live here on the island. And that, I think is very important, the chairman of residents on the island to be in charge. So we're looking forward to a good seafood restaurant, good place to hang out. And, uh, I hope we'll get a favorite vote by everyone to move on and let's get started and get going. We're a good place to hang out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next up is Mr. Chevlin Howe, 278 40 Trail, excuse me, Forest Trail, followed by Karen Joyce, 930th Avenue.
All right, uh, anybody see me here?
Yes, sir.
All right, and I apologize, uh, you can tell I use Zoom way too often, try to mix it up with my backgrounds. But, uh, uh, first and foremost, thanks to the council for giving an opportunity to share my thoughts on the new IOP Marina restaurant. Uh, to echo what Mike Zimoff said earlier, thanks for your service in the council. I know what a tough job it must be, especially in a day and age of, uh, social media, a lot of internet bullies. But I've only lived here on, uh, Forest Trail for about a year prior to moving, uh, from Mount Pleasant. But, uh, before I moved out here, I spent probably a decade coming out to Morgan Creek on a weekly basis. I was actually thinking earlier, God, I'm glad I haven't read any reports, uh, showing how much money I've spent there over the years, probably could have funded my kids' college education to Clemson, of course. But, uh, speaking of my kids, uh, they've always had such a blast playing out there, playing in the sand, listening to music while we caught up with friends over food and drinks. I especially miss, uh, using the, uh, watching people use the boat ramp during happy hour. That was a pastime in itself. But since I've moved out here, there's been a tremendous void, um, without having a local place to go. Um, you know, to have drinks, uh, to have a good time, uh, you know, relax, you know, a local place we can go where we could walk on with needed. And I'm really concerned if the council doesn't approve this and tries to do another RFP or renegotiate the lease, it's going to be at least another year before renovation start and even longer until, until the restaurant, uh, reopens. That's going to create a tremendous void in our lives and a, you know, big void and the, uh, lives of a lot of my friends. So I fully support the council approving the lease and I was supportive of this bid over all of the others responding to this RFP. I work in the public space. I've participated in dozens of, uh, public RFP-
That's 30 minutes for the public comment session.
Thanks in advance for approving this lease and for your, for your time.
Yes, I'm on. Okay, hello, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt. I just want to point out, um, Nicole, we have reached 30 minutes worth of public comments.
How was the last comment?
Since we have Karen online, can we just finish up with that and then move on?
That's your call, Mayor.
Let's go, since we've already got her on, let's let her move, say her three minutes and then we'll move on.
Thank you. Ms. Joyce, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity for letting me speak today. My name is Karen and my husband Josh and I live at 930th Avenue with our sons Connor, who's 14, and Declan, who's 11. As rental property owners, I'd like to thank the council for, for all you have done this year with, with respect to COVID restrictions, particularly with rental properties. It was a difficult call and I believe you struck a balance of the safety of our residents and the financial wellbeing of rental property owners along with island businesses. For that, we thank you. Our family regularly went to Morgan Creek to listen to music and to get together with neighbors as the location is truly second to none. We were thrilled when Chrissy and Dave Lorenz and Bridget and John Bushnell told us that they were going to submit a proposal to take over the lease and replace Morgan Ke- Creek with a restaurant that would appeal to all island residents. A restaurant with, that would not only provide a spot for getting together with friends and neighbors, but also provide good quality food, food at reasonable prices. This is undoubtedly a big project that requires significant private investment to the tune of over $2 million. In the end, Chrissy, Dave, John and Bridget are essentially making improvements and repairs to a property that is owned by the island. As former restaurant owners ourselves, who have also gone through the process of fitting out a restaurant while complying with all the codes and restrictions required in public spaces, we know what a daunting project this is. I have full faith that these two families will make improvements to the property that will benefit the island and its residents for years to come. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, anyone else who was signed up to speak, I apologize, but we have a time limit. What we're doing, this is our first time doing this. I thank you all for having signed up. Please send your comments in, they will be online for everybody to see. Uh, moving on to the purpose of-
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes, sir, please.
Yeah, there was also written comments that were submitted today and could you remind everyone that those written comments are online as well?
Those, as everybody just heard, written comments are online and those who are wishing to speak, please put it in writing and send it in so we have everybody's comments. Thank you.
Well.
Moving on to the purpose of our meeting, the second reading of ordinance 2020-12 in ordinance to enter into a commercial use with marker 116 LLC. Everybody's had this, we've talked about it last week, we had a great presentation by John Chalfly and the, um, Families Group. Um, do we feel that we need to hear from our realtor and from the Families Group for a very brief opportunity to speak? Council? I see it shaking their heads, no. Okay, do I hear a motion to go forward with a vote? To approve a lease?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the lease as presented and we have a second discussion.
I've got, I've got a point, Mr. Mayor, that I'd like to ask about. It's in regards to the lease and the, uh, private parking agreement that we have it here. I guess it's the language that I'm looking at, uh, uh, for shared parking. And I'm just, I'm looking at that and it's like, uh, we've called out that M- MJV Marine, Marina Joint Ventures is the, uh, the manager of, uh, shared parking. And it just seems to me that since the city is the owner of the property, why would we have a tenant that is the manager of the joint parking and, uh, and control of the revenues for that partic- that particular area? Seems to me that the language should be that we have Marina manager in charge as designated by the city administrator. In my, in my opinion, the city administrator is the Marina manager, not MJV. So, uh, I'm just, uh, throwing it out there that maybe that should be an amendment to the language on the lease, uh, so that we can clear that up and, uh, and have, I think, some city control, uh, over, uh, what happens in that shared parking area.
Are you making a motion to amend the language?
I am making a motion to amend the language to reflect that. However, we need to do that, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Jimmy, man.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think just for, for point of clarity, there are, there are really three entities. Um, the Families Group, Marina Joint Ventures, which has management of the Marina, and MJV has, within their lease, it, it is, it is defined as to what falls under that lease control. There has always been, and this predates my time on real property and on council, discussions as to the management of shared parking. There has been a lot of contention going back to Linda Tucker, the prior council, meetings I've participated in with the tenants. And shared parking was, was just that, it was shared between the restaurant, the water sports company and, um, and, and the balance of the arena. I think what Councilman Streetman's trying to point out is we need to be careful that shared parking that does not fall under, uh, the lease as written for Marina Joint Ventures is, is not indicated as such in this agreement. And to that point, there are parts of this agreement, like the illustration that parenthetically show MJV. No, it, it is, the shared parking is an asset of the city managed by the current, uh, MJV manager, Brian Bergen, but it is not part of the MJV lease. And I think to, uh, Councilman Streetman's point, I think we need to be careful and extract that language from, from this lease.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir. Councilmember.
Yeah, Mayor, let me, Rusty, can I make sure I understand the point? Are we saying just take out that entity name and put in a different entity name or a role in this case?
Uh, yes, basically. I mean, I, I would say that we take out the MJV in this in parentheses or whatever and, uh, and, you know, and the Marina manager basically should be someone or whatever is identified, uh, by the city and, uh, not controlled by another tenant in that area.
It's, it's really the manager of shared parking.
Yeah, right. And, and, and I, and I don't, I don't know how that looks. I mean, we have to come up with, I think that's probably a real property discussion going forward, uh, you know, as to how that looks. I'm just saying for the language of the lease and what we have here tonight, uh, I personally would like to see that removed and that's why I made the amendment.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Yes, sir, Councilmember Ward.
Related to the parking, um, recently saw some drawings of the, uh, proposed green space and, um, there were parking spaces in front of that. Will that be reserved for visitors and island residents to come down and sit and then, and have free parking to enjoy the free, uh, the green space?
Councilmember Ward, if I may, um, the area that is shown in the parking exhibit in blank, that is the space that was formerly encumbered by the previous water sports operation. That is now, uh, under the city's control. So it would be up to the city to decide what it wanted to do with that space. And last week, um, staff presented a conceptual drawing of what that space could, space could look like. Um, it did require some participation with other stakeholders, but, but the same space that was, um, encumbered is now, um, under the city's control based on its city's action with that lease.
Would the question is, will there be free parking available adjacent to that space?
So if council decides to use that space for free resident parking, then city council has the authority to make that call. Council hasn't made that decision yet, but certainly you all would have the opportunity to decide and dictate how that new space that has become available by that lease expiration, then, um, certainly city council would be in a position to do-
So it isn't, it isn't decided at this point, you know, uh, where, who's going to get those spaces?
That is correct. That, those spaces haven't been encumbered by any new lease.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I, I guess I want to add to the, to the comment earlier, um, there, there is a different lease that's not being talked about as, as part of the, the restaurant lease that currently has the management control over the shared parking. Um, and that is the Marina Joint Ventures lease, which, um, exhibit five indicates that parking management and the shared parking would be managed by the Marina manager and, um, under the direction of the Marina manager. So I think if, if I'm hearing correctly, the proposed amendment is to strike the MJV, MJV reference from the parking exhibit?
That's correct.
Okay, I, I mean, certainly we could do that. It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily change the fact that the Marina manager currently, per that lease, has control management, parking management duties of that space. I just don't want, I, I, I'm, I'm advising against, um, muddying the water by talking about a, a lease that's, that's not on the, um, a, a topic that's not on the agenda for discussion.
Guess what I'm trying to say is that basically it doesn't concede management to just Marina Joint Ventures, basically.
Well, the current Marina Joint Ventures lease, exhibit five makes the Marina manager the one in charge and responsible for parking management of the Marina site and also includes the shared parking is managed and shared among all the tenants under the direction of the Marina manager. So we want to make sure that the language from this lease is consistent with the current lease that the city has with the other, um, the other stakeholder which has management control over the parking.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So just again, for clarity, shared parking, you know, the question is shared or the comment is shared, a shared amongst the tenants, right? And, and look, to, to be blunt, the, the question has come out as to, you know, is that a paid parking area benefiting MJV or is that shared parking amongst the tenants and shared on behalf of the city? It, it doesn't matter who manages that. I mean, there, there's certainly no issue with the current Marina manager being Brian Bergen managing that parking on behalf of the city. We don't want to relegate the shared parking and make any assumptions that it falls under the MJV lease. And I, I don't, I don't, Desiree, I don't know what the correct language is, but, but the concern that's been expressed back from residents, I think over the course of, of discussion here is let, let's be clear, that's a shared parking area. Does that mean that in the future residents can park for free? I don't know. I think what it, what it does mean is that it's shared on behalf of the city, uh, under the direction of the Marina manager. And I think, you know, that's something that we need to be cognizant that we don't, you know, memorialize this by saying that, you know, MJV is part of this lease is in charge is, I, I don't want, even want to say in charge of, but under lease, that it's under lease control for MJV. And, and Desiree, I'll conclude with a question, uh, is shared parking under the MJV lease area, right? And, and if the simple answer is no, then it's shared parking on behalf of the city.
Desiree, you're mute.
I think we're confusing, um, a lot of concepts and I'm, I'm concerned that we're getting into a discussion that's not necessarily on the agenda. Um, the only mention to Marina Joint Ventures in the restaurant lease is the parking layout, which would be identical to the parking layout and has the same language that the Marina Joint Ventures lease currently has, which makes the Marina manager as part of the Marina Joint Ventures responsible for parking management. And, um, the exhibit from the Marina Joint Ventures lease, which dictates what the shared parking is, it's under the Marina, under the shared, among all tenants, under the direction of the Marina manager. So I think if the concern is making, having the parking layout, have it mentioned of the Marina Joint Ventures lease, that could be strike, that could be strike from the parking exhibit, but that doesn't change the fact that the shared parking through a different lease is managed by the Marina manager.
Is everybody clear on this? Rusty wants the MJV reference taken out, but it's still a shared parking lot. Uh, Councilmember Popsen?
Yeah, I'm just curious, how does this amendment affect, um, item 3A and 3B on tonight's agenda?
Right now, we're talking 3A, which is-
Okay. Again, just 3A?
Yes, sir.
Does it, does it affect the terms of the negotiations that we've been through?
No.
No, it does not. In my opinion, it doesn't affect the terms of the negotiation of the, of the lease that we're going to consider, just a language clarification and, and as I proposed in the amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Pounds?
Sorry, Mayor. So Rusty, again, let me just be sure I'm clear. So to Desiree's point, are we asking for this change just on the exhibit or somewhere within the base of the lease document?
Basically, Philip, just on the exhibit itself at this point, and I think this is a subject that probably in the future, real property should take up as to how this looks.
No, I'm with you. I'm just asking about tonight. So, you know, I think, Desiree's point, I mean, I think that's an easy.
Yeah, this, yeah, it's like, it's basically removing the reference to Marina Joint Ventures as being, I guess exclusively the Marina manager. And, you know, from the, from the lease itself, and then for another day, real property may have to take up what that looks like.
Yeah, so Desiree, I guess that's the question. Taking it off the exhibit should be a non-event, I'm guessing, as opposed to some language in the lease itself.
Correct. I mean, taking, taking the parentheses, MJV, from that parking exhibit will not change any current agreement that the city has for the use of the parking and the Marina.
With, so, so I don't know, Mr. Mayor or Desiree, I mean, is a, is that really an amendment to this conversation tonight, or just an administrative change that we need to make?
And I'm not sure, and Desiree, and also going to speak out loud for our attorney to listen, you know, this alters our lease purpose tonight of the commercial lease for the restaurant. And this, we've got to make sure we do this correctly, and we have nothing to come back and bite us later on.
I guess what I'll say is that the, the language of this parking exhibit that's included in the restaurant lease, that language is identical to the parking exhibit that's been in place as part of the Marina Joint Ventures lease. So taking out MJV, again, doesn't change that. It's sort of a formality, but the existing Marina Joint Ventures lease exhibit includes the shared parking area as being managed under the director, direction of the Marina manager. So that, again, doesn't change anything. We can, we can strike MJV from this exhibit, but again, it won't change that, if that makes sense.
I'm good with that. Anyone else? Okay, Nicole, for the amendment, would you read it back to us first before we vote?
I'm not even sure what it is, because you never actually stated it, but I'm going to say, based on this conversation, that we are just striking MJV from the exhibit only, the language where they're in parentheses. Is that correct, Desiree?
That's what I'm thinking.
That's the only thing being changed. The lease itself is not being touched. We are removing the language MJV from the exhibit of the shared parking agreement. Is that correct, Councilmember Streetman?
That's correct. Thank you.
All right, so I'll take a vote then. Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward? Aye. Thank you. Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Going back to the original amendment, second reading, ordinance 2020-12, warrants entered into a commercial lease of marker 116 LLC as amended. Nicole, may we have a vote?
Absolutely. Councilmember Ward? Aye. Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Moving on, item B, second reading of ordinance 2020-13, Fifth Amendment to the Commercial Lease Agreement with Marina Joint Ventures. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And we have a second discussion.
Just want to clarify, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am, please.
So this is a very limited amendment to Exhibit 5 of the existing Marina Joint Ventures agreement. It basically establishes the termination clause in the event that the parking agreement that's been entered between the Marina restaurant folks and the Marina manager for the exclusive use of employee parking, which is responsible to provide. In the event that that is terminated, then the language in the existing lease would revert back to the way that it is now. That would help protect the restaurants from having employee parking in the event that this mutually agreeable agreement, for lack of a better word, is terminated, you know, the restaurant, the Marina manager would still be responsible for providing and accommodating employee parking in the site. So this is very limited. Again, if, if, if there is a, I guess, the same question about the exhibit and the MJV reference in that layout, it's the same, we can, we can go ahead and strike that. I don't think we need to make an amendment. But this protects the, this protects that agreement. And in the event, again, that the agreement is not in place, it would go back to, the language would revert back to free employee parking and what we have in place now.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Hearing done. Nicole?
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward? Aye. Councilmember? Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Moving on, item C, consideration of emergency ordinance 2020-14 to extend the state of emergencies, modify beach parking restrictions, and extend emergency provisions due to COVID-19. We brought this up tonight because December is quickly upon us, and we won't be having a December meeting, and our current restrictions expire on December 13th. And we've got a lot of things that we are going under the state's emergency ordinance mandates, but they do expire on the 13th. So do I hear a motion to extend the state of emergency ordinance and modify the beach parking restrictions and extend other emergency provisions due to COVID-19?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to take this up at next Tuesday's council meeting. This was a fairly late addition add to this particular meeting. And we've taken a lot of comments in terms of our transparency and allowing the public to weigh in. And I just think the prudent choice is to give this a week. We're not under a one-week pressure point to do this, but give it a week, let the public weigh in, and let's listen to the community response and take a vote on this at next week's council meeting, in the form of a motion. I could bet.
Councilmember Streetman, you seconded it. Thank you.
I did.
Councilmember Ward?
One of order, is that a motion to defer?
That's how, you're pretty much.
Yes. Yes?
Yes.
So we had a motion to defer and seconded by Councilmember Streetman and a clarification from Councilmember Ward as for deferring for one week to give our citizens of Owl Palms, residents of Owl Palms, time to digest what we're doing. And all this is online for them to see and read. Any questions? Hearing done. Nicole?
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. There is no need for an executive session. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussions. All in favor?
Aye.